Good afternoon, let's open up the Dishes County Board of Commissioners only meeting this week. Happens to be November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. And citizen input is first on our agenda, is there anyone in the room? Is there anyone with a raised hand online? No, okay, all right, so then let's look at our consent agenda. And the first item on consent is from O S U four H. So that will be convened under that body as the governing body.
Four can just do one motion.
Oh, we may, I knew I had it in my notes and then I didn't think it.
Yeah, we've noticed it appropriately on the agenda.
Okay.
Indicating how you guys are taking action.
All right. So we do have eight items on consent then. Is there a motion?
Little bit of discussion on some of these items, but I mean, oh, I can move. Consent to agenda and then we'll just talk.
Okay.
Second.
All right, and a discussion, please.
So with this packet for four H extension. It's drafted the back that's being changed from. Not in the front, I mean, it wasn't obvious which what. The two thousand thirteen and then draft is for the same one.
Correct.
And then it looks like it's going from seven to five, does that make? One of the structural pieces here, I don't know.
That's correct.
Yeah, if you're.
I was not involved in this, but at the same time, it's basically four H. The Extension Office sent it to us and the only duty of the body is that under the law, you have to, governing bodies have to approve it. But they were the ones who made the changes.
Yeah, so I hadn't heard about it before this, but it looks like that. And then the last little statement I have is to say nothing to do with you, but in the event of dissolution, all council assets shall revert to O S U Extension Service for use in Dishes County. I, so this is the special district. We have a contract with O S U. Extension basically sent all the resources there. But it says. I don't give away that, because we've got property building and. Operations over there. But it said, I just had questions. So and I don't think there's any dissolution on the horizon here, but is that the right statement? The event of dissolution, all council assets shall revert to O S U Extension.
Um, yeah, we weren't, again, we weren't involved in drafting of these other than just presenting this. I don't know what buildings they have other than the least that they have with.
Yeah, so as I say, I guess from my fellow commissioners, any insight into this or, I mean, I don't see anything controversial, I just didn't have any information for this.
Yes, they've definitely come to us. Their original document.
Yeah, I, I, I mean. These advisory councils exist to support extension, so I don't have any concern about the council's assets. Reverting to your extension. Solves.
And that's fine, I mean, I was just trying to get clarity in it, okay, so. The next item, the Secure Residential Treatment Facility talks about requirements in place till twenty forty four. And this is just kind of logistics of this, as in. I have a hunch that they could be able to. Utilize and consume those two million dollars pretty quick. So does this really have to stay in place till twenty forty four?
That was a condition of the grant funds, obviously, the funds would be provided to them on build out. But then if they don't, if they cease operations during that time period of the twenty years, or basically from twenty six to forty four. It's, I think it's prorated at a hundred thousand dollars per year.
Okay.
That they would be back with their grants.
That's fine, yeah, that was just, I was just thinking, you know, it's probably gonna be, we consume these dollars and now I've got this overhead, I'm thinking as a business owner, but this is protecting the grant funds.
Correct.
That we can see the operation.
I think that was all I had, just two questions.
Okay, anything else?
I mean, while we're, while we're talking about that, that item, I'll just say. I am super excited that we are going to have another secure residential treatment facility. In our community, this innovative public-private partnership with Jackson House, it's really. Apparently, this is the way that, that we're, we're going to get this done, I mean, there have been earlier efforts to, to. Get another secure residential treatment facility in our community that, that struggled, so it is a great. In my mind, it's a great thing to have this, this partnership opportunity to. To invest these two million dollars into and get a desperately needed secure residential treatment facility. For, to, you know, to serve the people of Dishes County.
Would it be appropriate to have Holly come up and just also, your good news on Friday at our behavioral health meeting when you said. The children's facility that's being worked on, we're looking at like, what, fifteen beds now instead of six?
We're, it's still early conversations, but yes.
Yeah.
And so, and we're also working with Jackson House around that project as well, so, you know, lots, lots of details still to be worked out around that, but, but the secure residential treatment facility, it's very exciting. We've only had sixteen beds in our community for, I don't know, twenty some odd years, we've never had any other secure residential facility, we've struggled, they're expensive to build. So to have this partnership has been the way to get it done and it will double our capacity. So it will make a huge difference particularly for our civilly committed population, our homelessness population, and it will be massive. So then in line with that, the child facility, we're still working very much towards getting that up and running, very good momentum on that project, working with Jackson House around ideas and modeling for that. We are potentially looking at like a fifteen bed. What's the virtues P R T S psychiatric treatment residential, I can't remember what it stands for right off the top of my head. It's an, more acronyms, but also hopefully being able to create some type of crisis rest of it opportunity as well for children. So that is moving along, we're gonna get some numbers back, working with O H A on that, and hope to get some proposals here soon and. Get that going.
Regardless of what John Collins said a couple month, last month at the meeting, that beds don't count, they do count.
We need beds, we need beds in our community, we need, the side of the mountain is, if you look at the map of residential capacity across the state, we are way under resourced in our area, so this is a step in the right direction.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Well, this is where legislative support could sure come in, because I know that Dishes Recovery Centers, it's Secure Resident Treatment Facility, but Dishes County building.
Yeah.
Uh, so, as I say, we're building these things locally in the community, the model is to manage in the community, which is wonderful. But if we don't have legislative support to help keep this going, uh, you know, strings like what we just saw in that previous one, we're giving two million dollars, we're gonna keep you, put the pressure on for twenty years, which. I'm just advocating for legislative support.
I'll always take legislative support.
Yep, I mean, kind of unpack that a little bit, you know, this segment. I'm, I'm glad that we get a twenty year commitment that they're gonna operate, um, you know, for the, the funds that we're turning over. But, you know, would be, it would be helpful to have an understanding of. How, what is the, what is the business model for operating a facility like this, I mean, how much? Uh, how much Medicaid or O H P funding is coming in and, you know, how much other funding from other places is coming in to actually make it viable to, to operate?
It's primarily a revenue generating operation, so their model, they modeled it out. Six, the rate for secure residential is substantial enough that if it stays full, then they, they do, they, they make their money, they cover their costs. The two million is really kind of towards getting it built, but also helping kind of this first one or two years as they build up their model and get referrals going and get that stabilized, but it should be a self-sustaining model. Once they get through that, staffing is always the challenge with any of these facilities, so we'll see how that plays out. But the rates need to keep up with the staffing, so that's where the state legislature could be really helpful, is making sure our rates don't stay stagnant.
And our existing S R T, I mean, the recovery center, they are.
Full all the time.
Full all the time.
Full all the time.
And it's working for them in terms of operating revenue.
Yes, and they, and they actually would have, you know, they would have built another one, it's just the, the money to build these facilities is substantial. Um, and state gives two million, which doesn't even, not a drop in the bucket for what it costs to actually build these, so that's where it can be a challenge.
We actually built one in Hermiston a couple of years ago, and I believe that they had sold it for five million to Community Solutions.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that was, and it was really a lovely facility in Hermiston, so I think it was built in like nineteen twenties.
Oh, great.
Twenty twenty or something.
And Community, they do great work.
Yeah, so, but, you know, it, we desperately need more facilities on the side of the mountain.
We do.
Probably on the other side too.
Yeah, it's true.
Yeah.
So just for understanding, when you say sustainable, that's. Feeling bad, state, federal.
Medicaid. Yeah, mainly Medicaid. Um, and so that's, that's the, they set the rates high enough in these secure facilities because of the staffing ratios and the requirements to operate them, that they. You know, their modeling is dependent upon those rates. And staying full is part of it, and that's not an issue here.
I don't think that would be a problem.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be a problem either.
No.
But the rates, the rates.
The rates need to keep up, and that's a constant conversation we're having in the legislature, yeah.
Oh, I do wanna, thanks, thanks. I do want to acknowledge and thank Jim Pfister for continuing to serve on our Dishes County Budget Committee. So, calling for the vote, Mr. Devon?
Yes.
And Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And there was yes, so let's now go to item number nine. Or three?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, for the record, Hallie King, Associate Planner with Community Development. This next item is the second reading for ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero one one. Which is the Board Approval of the Core Three Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Zone Change and Urban Growth Boundary Expansion. To remind the Commissioners, we held a first reading for this ordinance on November fourth, twenty twenty four, where Chair Dare and Commissioner Chang voted to approve first reading. With no changes requested at that first reading. Um, so again, now we're back here with second reading. Um, and note, again, no changes in the packet, and if the, you know, unless there's any questions, staff would recommend a motion to adopt the second reading by title only.
Question?
None? I need this, there are motion then?
Yeah, I'll move approval of second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero one one by title only. I'll second it.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Calling for the vote, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. Devon?
Yes.
And the Chair of both, yes, moving of approval of second reading. Of ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero one one by title only, and ordinance amending to Dishes County Code Title twenty three. The Dishes County Comprehensive Plan to Adjust the Redmond Urban Growth Boundary and Comprehensive Plan Designations. For Certain Properties and Title eighteen, the Dishes County Zoning Map to Adjust Zoning for Certain Properties. So then we need adoption.
I'll move adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero one one. Second.
Um, any further discussion? I'll refer to Commissioner Chang, excuse me, to both.
Yes.
And Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair of both, yes, moving adoption of ordinance or twenty twenty four dash zero one one. So, thank you. We now go to item number ten.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, for the record, Eric Robb, Deputy County Administrator. Joining me at the table will be Amy Fraley, City of Ben. And she is the Senior Program Manager for Houseless, Houselessness Solutions. On October twenty third, the board passed a joint resolution with the City of Ben City Council. The joint resolution created that temporary safe stay area. Northeast of Ben, or what is commonly referred to as Juniper Ridge. A key component of the temporary safe stay area is to fund. Housing-focused case management services. And the resolution that was, was passed contemplated an I G A between the City of Ben and Dishes County to fund this housing-focused. Case management. So for your consideration today. Is the I G A between the City of Ben and Dishes County. The I G A has the county. Sending four hundred thousand dollars of county ARPA funds, or what used to be county ARPA funds, but have been. Reprogrammed. About four hundred thousand dollars of those ARPA funds to the City of Ben. And then the City of Ben will match those with city ARPA funds. And these are ARPA funds that originated with the city, they aren't the ARPA funds that the city received from the county. But the I G A calls for both the city and the county to put forward eight hundred thousand dollars. And the city will contract with service providers to provide housing-focused case management services. For about the next two years at Juniper Ridge. Uh, I've been working with Amy on the I G A. Uh, the city has a few formatting changes to what was in the board packet. Uh, we can handle that between, between the, the staff. Um, but the main thing is, is for the board to review kind of the programmatic piece of the I G A. Uh, which is page two of the I G A. And page two hundred and seven of the board packet. Uh, I'll go over to Amy to see if there are any things you'd like to add.
That was perfect, I'm just here to answer any questions. Hopefully Commissioners have received a copy of the presentation that was provided to council on November sixth. That laid out the framework for the housing-focused case management at the T S S A.
And the city, the city's effort includes for other housing services that are in the city, city council presentation with safe parking and other pieces.
That's correct.
So that concludes the staff report. You're seeking more approval for County Administrator Signature on the I G A.
I'm excited to be moving ahead with this, this stage of the Temporary Safe Stay Area Project. I do. Thinking beyond this step of just putting these, these monies together between the city and county, I have, I, I'm concerned about. Um, finding service providers who are ready and able to do this work, I mean, is there? Do we have any sense yet? Uh, from the service provider community, whether. When we put out the R F B for this, there's not going to be any responses or not.
So, if it's all right, um, what we did on November sixth, or what council did, was put forward a houseless services grant program that included the T S S A. And of those providers that attended those informational sessions, we've had two so far, that'll be open until December seventh. The providers that are already working in that area to provide some kind of services, we've had. Two apply, and we're hoping that the other providers that are out there will also put in an application for that eight hundred thousand for housing focus case. We, if we don't see those folks come forward, we are absolutely willing to put some more inquiries out there.
And is your vision that? You could have more than one?
Yes.
A contracted entity?
That's correct.
Possible?
Yes. We'd like to believe that if COVO, excuse me, is the appropriate case manager or case management organization. Or a camp, there may be another camp that is better served, for instance, by Reach or by Shepherd's House, Share Van, and so. Our intent, we have initial conversations going on with Neighbor Impact to manage the information and the H M I S data to make sure that we're not duplicating any kind of services or counts. And then we'll be bringing forward information and metrics monthly, or, um, because you had said, I know.
He said two every two weeks.
Every two weeks, but I think what we were talking about initially is that services being every other week.
And then. Commissioner Devon asked for a report every two weeks, of course, we go to the full board, but what we can do is do the report every two weeks and then once a month it will.
Thank you.
Well, uh, between now and next May is a big, you know, step, right? And there's only half a dozen, seven months between now and then. Uh, so that's seven months of reports, and I'm not looking for a big overhead here, but we know this many people, we've, you know, offered this, uh, this many people have moved out, whatever. Uh, but, yeah, I'm just thinking. We need to have a mind for this next seven months or so.
We have them very clear in the grant application that those metrics are included and are to be provided monthly, which is the same cadence that we do with the other shelters that the city supports, and then it's published on our website, on our data.
So you didn't mention Central Oregon Villages at this, at this moment?
A Central Oregon Villages.
Right, if they haven't, they weren't, they weren't one that applied, then you said what, COVO?
No, what I was saying is those were examples.
Okay, so you're not saying exactly who has.
No, I, I'm not.
Okay, I just want to make, um, make sure that we do have. The capacity in the community because honestly, we need the, we need the four days a week.
Yes, and that is, the budget is built around those, those four touches.
Right.
And a sixty percent engagement rate.
Exactly, so. And do we even have a count? Is it, is it appropriate at this moment in time to ask if, is it Bio Solutions, if they're going to be working over on the other side of the railroad track sign?
It is my understanding, yes, but that is not, I'm just the program person.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, I, because they seem to know really what is going on. I had an incredible conversation with them, and they had not been working over there, and so the, the accounts over there were, seemed to be a little catchy at times.
We built, we cast a really wide net with two hundred and eighty individuals, knowing that there may be more than that living in a specific camp, but that was certainly on the high end. Of all of our counts, and so at that sixty percent engagement rate.
High end, two eighty is your high end, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Knowing that there may be remainder children that may not receive services, but could be provided services through an adult in, in the camp as well.
Couple other thoughts, uh, you know, population. Might go up at some point instead of going down because it's a defined area. Not judging or asking or whatever, but. It'd be a shame if we find out thirty days later that we've. Grown this instead of two weeks, so I'm just advocating for two weeks again. Uh, also, you know, the, the date that nobody is east of the tracks, you know, talking about May, it'd be nice to know if it's gonna happen. A little bit before that or right on time, so as I say, I just feel like a monthly report's gonna keep me a little bit disconnected from the current status, so that, those are the kinds of things I've been looking for. Also, remember, registered vaccinated dogs, I mean, that's serious business we already had a depth out there. So, uh, you know, if, if there's an evaluation of we have, we estimate this many dogs, uh, you know, we have service providers offering registration and support and vaccination support. That's a deliverable, you know, that we're gonna get to at some point. So just saying, those are the kinds of things I'm thinking of.
Okay. So with, for instance, if the animal. Vaccination was a barrier, so when we're talking about housing.
Everything's barrier, obviously.
Very true, and so it would just need to be articulated in an initial service plan as to. How that cost could be rolled into housing focused case management, and so there's certainly a threat.
I, as I said, this is just me asking for this, it's a deliverable, I mean, we've got.
Absolutely.
Cultural norms and community expectations and laws. That we're not following, so I'm trying to figure out where can we bring this up.
To be very frank, getting information, uh, data and getting those counts in those hours, it's. It takes capacity of providers, and our provider network is often pretty stressed. Um, as far as time, and so I'm very comfortable saying that we can gather that information on a monthly basis, we can bring anecdotal information every two weeks. But those hard numbers through H M I S would probably be a monthly, a monthly report.
I was just sharing thoughts in my head about what.
Um, Commissioner Chang and I did get a very interesting email from someone yesterday, I believe it was, all about. When we've let people that haven't had to follow the law or the rules and what they've done, and where in, um. In California where the rats were taking over, you know, the homeless. And you've, and so you've, it's a, it's a balance, and not everyone is gonna want to follow it, and we definitely, I believe we just had another fire out there. And, you know, according to Ben Fire, that would make it like number eighty of the fires. Prancet fires in this year today, so I don't know, it was R V or something that had a fire, I believe.
Because the other camp that's near one of the, one of the hygiene stations.
Okay, it's on county, that one was on county property then?
We, we're working with Bio Solutions to clean it up immediately.
Okay.
So, oh, it's just kind of thinking out ahead. Along another line. Are we concerned that as people are. Moved out of the, the east of the tracks area. Um, and then eventually down of the, the other area. Are we concerned that a lot of those people are going to Chinatown Road?
Focus is housing. So of course, always concerned about people not moving into more permanent housing, but going, they dislocated and going somewhere different. That's also not suitable for human habitation for a long period of time, um, or survival camping. The hope is by providing the service that they are more likely to move into more permanent housing, I think we will have to. Wait to see if that comes to fruition, or if that concern is something that we need to address in another way. The housing-focused case management dollars are specific to outreach within this greater grant program, could in theory be used also at Chinatown. And so even if somebody moved from the T S S A, which is only this eight hundred thousand dollars from the match. That case management could follow them into another place and hopefully prevent them from going to, to Chinatown, finding a more appropriate placement instead.
Amy, do you have any update on Old Millin and Suites, I know there's seventy six units here.
Um, from what I understand, though, I, I have not checked with C O I C or the MAC group, so, um, I do understand that, uh, two. Households from Central Oregon Villages were making a transition into Old Millin and Suites, and that there were another two. That were potentially moving into Old Millin and Suites, I believe that Reach also had two to three clients that were, uh. On the precipice of going into Old Millin and Suites, and so those are the only providers that I've talked to specifically.
That's maybe like five, five of the units would be taken.
I, I'm not sure to be.
Okay, no, I just, I was just wondering.
I have heard progresses being made and people are going in, so we're really excited about that resource, and that, of course, would be, uh, hopefully where, where folks are transitioning.
Okay, so Central Oregon Villages, right, and I know that, um, at Oasis Village, they were actually in Redmond, outer area. Um, they were looking for places for some of those residents were ready to move on, and they just haven't found them yet. So, okay, well, thank you for that update on that.
And like I said, that's only two providers that I happened to talk to, so it could be far more than that, those are just the ones that I know.
Good.
I, I'll obviously, I'm still concerned, we wouldn't be exploring. Uh, we wouldn't be exploring managed camps, we would be exploring temporary safety areas if there was. Abundant shelter and housing for people to go to right now, so. Yeah, yeah, I just want flagging, just flagging that.
Absolutely.
That we, um. You know, I, I was. Um, tracking, tracking that, um, have been due, um, hazardous fuels reduction project on the Dishes National Forest, that's gonna be moving through that area. And, um. It'd be really unfortunate to be pushing more people to Chinatown at the same time that they're trying to clear out areas to get the, to get the work done.
We did add another safe parking site last month, and we expect there to be at least.
How many sites, that one?
That one, three.
Three, okay, three more.
And then, and we've got the six that are coming on at Dean Swift, that we expect to be available before the end of the year.
Right.
And then, um, Mountain View Community Development is also exploring some safe parking, and I think C O B even has another site that they're looking at, so. There's, they're small steps, but there are a couple more beds, we also expect the Navigation Center to, um, transition back into their renovated space in the next couple of weeks, and so. Um, while we're hoping that the Franklin Avenue Shelter, which is at the Rainbow and has been housed in the back of the building, will be able to take a little more space, it could create a couple of more beds in the front. Of that building.
So Navigation Center, a couple more weeks, you said?
Yes, by December first, they will be out of the former Blue Dog R V site, which is where they have been running day services, and will be back at their permanent location on second.
There's someone that's gonna make a motion?
Move to approved County Administrator Signature of Document Number twenty twenty four dash eight eight eight. An intergovernmental agreement between the City of Ben and Dishes County. To fund housing-focused case management at the Temporary Safe Stay Area.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Mr. Devon?
Yes.
And the Chair of both, yes. So thank you very much, thanks for coming today. Okay, Nicole, Will? Okay, Nicole, Will?
Hey, good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, Nicole Mardella, senior planner with the Dushuts County Community Development. And I do just have a very brief PowerPoint today. Let's see if I share my screen. Um so I'm here today to give you an update on the state's efforts to update the Greater Sage Grouse maps. Um so for those who may not be familiar, who might be listening in, uh in twenty ten, sage grouse was identified as a candidate species for the Endangered Species Act by the U S Fish and Wildlife Department um as in kind of sort of through a an agreement um to avoid listing it completely, uh the Western states agreed to adopt conservation and assessment strategies and habitat maps and also development regulations to protect sage grouse habitat. Uh so in two thousand and eleven, uh the initial version was adopted by the Oregon Fish and Wildlife Commission, uh which was then incorporated into uh the Oregon Administrative Rule by Land Conservation and Development Commission in twenty fifteen. So that essentially established three different habitat areas for sage grouse, uh so core, low density and general habitat areas that were required to have protections as part of development processes uh when they're within three point one miles of a lack, also known as the striding grounds for sage grouse. Um that O A R requires several, seven eastern Oregon counties, including Dushuts County, to implement that that rule, those requirements and to implement those maps. So unlike other inventories that the county has, uh I'll use the example of mule deer, this comes from the state. Um we don't really have any flexibility in changing those maps. We have to implement them directly. So through that, we uh established our Greater Sage Grouse combining zone, and that was voluntary, but essentially was just helpful for property owners to see more specific data about the the sage grouse habitats. Uh the statewide maps are pretty generic. Um so we established that mostly for clarity uh for property owners. So wanted to note that currently that applies primarily to eastern Dushuts County. Um most of the private land in that area is owned for exclusive farm use. And we see very limited development activity in those areas to date since twenty fifteen. In twenty twenty two, uh the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife initiated an update process to update that conservation and assessment strategy and their habitat maps. They had some new information from collaring uh sage grouse, so some specific info from actually having collars on the birds uh to be able to understand their movements and the lacs and kind of their general my uh migration areas. Um so they still have not uh produced an updated copy of that conservation and assessment strategy. I just wanted to note note that, um but they did go through the process to formally adopt those maps. Um so wanted to note that they released the initial draft in July of last year. We provided an update to the board at that time, noting some of the key differences between our existing map and that twenty twenty three data. And there's also an open house in Bend uh that I attended and there were a couple other agencies and property owners at that meeting.
I think a few steps, they didn't publish something. I I was maybe be focused for a moment there, but yeah, what was that statement?
Yeah, so the um so O D F and W to incorporate this new collaring data, they produced a new set of maps and they were planning to adopt them in December of twenty twenty three. So they notified Dushuts County, we he- held an update work session with the board and O D F and W held an open house event to provide info on the maps.
But the maps haven't been officially adopted yet, is that what you're saying?
So Oregon Department of uh of Fish and Wildlife, they've completed the first of two steps. Uh so December of twenty twenty three, the maps were adopted by the Fish, Oregon Fish and Wildlife Commission. Uh but now we're in step two, uh which is the Land Conservation and Development Commission hearing process. So the maps have been adopted, but they're not in Oregon Administrative Rule, so they don't yet apply to development. Um so that's where we are today. Um why I wanted to include some of the uh information, though, on the O D F and W process is they had the opportunity um for property owners to contest the maps. So they sent out notice to property owners and the county. Um but they had a very heavy disclaimer on that information that said you can contest these maps if you can provide biological evidence that they're incorrect. So a property owner couldn't say I haven't seen a sage grouse up out here, or I don't wanna be in in this mapped area. You would have to have provided specific evidence from a biologist. So a pretty high bar to contest those maps. Um so where we are now, um again, is that these maps need to be integrated into the Oregon Administrative Rule. We've been coordinating with D L C D for about a year on this process. Um they've just been very um, you know, very short staffed. They've had a lot of work to do, so that's why there's been about that year delay. Uh but they sent us notice a few weeks ago that they're planning to hold the hearing to adopt these maps on January twenty third, um which will again incorporate those into administrative rule. And then as part of that, we're preparing as the county to update our local combining zone to reflect that new information following their adoption. Uh just wanted to note some of the key changes. So we had presented uh the previous version of the map, twenty twenty three map in July of last year. We got a new data set a few weeks ago from D L C D. We compared that data, our our G I S analyst, Tim Bird compared it. And there's no change with the exception that the Milliken Rural Service Center has been excluded. So they're not in a sage grouse habitat area. And you can see on this map the little circle carve outs, those are all of our rural service centers, so Milliken Brothers in Hampton. And the thinking behind that was that those were historically developed areas, um so they received kind of a carve out from those requirements. Um overall, we're seeing um compared to the twenty fifteen maps, we're seeing an overall decrease in the acreage um that covers the sage grouse combining zone in Dushuts County. So about twenty seven thousand acres of mostly general habitat is being removed. So those properties are no longer in that combining zone. Uh and for non-federal land, so that's anything other than federally owned lands, that includes private, county and state land. We're seeing a decrease in the number of tax lots, but a slight in- increase in the number of acres. So there are some properties that that are being excluded, but also some properties that are now being included that previously weren't mapped. Um so that is a change about of about ten thousand acres or so of non-federal land uh that's increasing.
So the actual number on here uh changed on your handout and than what we were given?
Yes, thank you. I was just about to mention that. So I was like, I appreciate you catching that. Yeah, so I apologize. The table that was in the memo um was from those July twenty twenty three maps. So with the exclusion of the Milliken areas, it's now ten thousand eight seventy eight instead of what was the memo, which was about eleven thousand.
And the ten thousand eight seventy eight, was that general habitat as well that was added, or was that other kinds of?
That was overall. So I believed it was general habitat, but also some core and low density. And so I can kind of provide a little bit more detail on that. So we have seventy tax lots that are being remapped from low density to core. So that means that they'll be subject to slightly greater restrictions on development. And then thirty two tax lots were moved out of core to low density. So about thirty six hundred or so acres. And that's just because of kind of the area slightly shifting with that new collaring data. Um, wanted to note, um so again, just kind of ease in reading this map. So the the existing sage grouse habitat area, that's the kind of lighter pastels. And then the new map uh includes kind of that that dotted uh overlay and then those kind of bolded boundaries. Um so again, you could see kind of a general shift in in those uh two areas. And then there just really isn't a need for the general habitat anymore. Um so O D F and W has essentially kind of removed that category. They really only classified them as core or low density. So um why I'm here today, uh because of this Land Conservation and Development Commission hearing on January twenty third, we wanted to provide an update to the board, um because we will be providing Measure fifty six notice. Um so we received that from D L C D. They will be reimbursing us for sending that mailed notice. Uh but property owners, of course, will be potentially asking questions to staff and and to the board. Uh but the board also has the opportunity, if you desire it, to provide testimony at that hearing. Um so again, within the kind of the parameters of noting that this is directly applied from state law, we don't really have the flexibility to alter it once it's adopted by L C D C. Um you know, if the board had any concerns, um that could be an opportunity to reach out to L C D C about it. Uh but noting that there is kind of that disclaimer that we need to provide some biological evidence to support any map changes that we'd be uh commenting on. Um so that's where we essentially are today.
The the Measure fifty six letters will go out to the tax lot owners for those ten thousand eight hundred and seventy eight acres that are new.
It will, we're providing it in consultation with legal counsel. We're providing it to all properties that are currently in the map or the new properties that will be included. Um so just so that's clear, that even if you're being removed, that there is this update process happening. Yeah, we plan to send that out the first week of December. There's a forty five day requirement for that notice. And because we'll also be updating our local map to comply with state law, we're also planning to provide information for the board's hearing date, which we're planning to schedule in in early February. Uh so with that, just wanted to know if uh the board had any questions, um or if there was a desire to provide comments to L C D C. Uh and in that case, I could collect your comments or or come back at a future meeting as well.
Does it, how many birds do they collar?
I actually don't have that information.
I mean, I was just curious, because they're saying, okay, there's been a little shift and I'm just wondering, you know, how many birds you collar so that you actually can recognize that there's a trend?
Yeah, that's a great question. I receive, I attended a presentation back in, you know, June, July uh of twenty twenty three where they described their process. So of course, they had kind of a sample size of the colored birds and then basically use that to update their models. Um but I could reach out to O D F and W staff and request that.
I just was curious.
All part would be between fifty and a hundred.
Fifty and a hundred, somewhere in there.
For this area.
Do you wanna identify yourself?
Uh, Stu here.
Well, I think at the table, so just so we know you're here.
I just wanted to note, this is a public commenter.
Oh, it's a public counter, okay, all right. So fifty to a hundred now, right, that uh?
Um, I I did have a question about this map, so am I recalling correctly that to the southwest of these areas, is that federal land?
Yes, yeah, primarily.
So if we're not seeing, uh we're not seeing those federal land areas designated on our map, it's, it doesn't mean that they're not uh identified as habitat. It's just you're only looking at the private means.
That's a good question. So what you see on that map, I believe, is all land. Um I can confirm with our G I S specialist, but that was provided by O D F and W. But I wanted to note that the B L M does have their own sage grouse habitat process. So they've had their own kind of E I S review of sage grouse habitat and restrictions for B L M land.
Trying to, I mean, mentally trying to place where Pine Mountain is here and.
As well.
Yeah, so that's all. This is our current uh sage grouse combining zone. So just for reference, I mean, this is kind of where you get into Newbury National Monument down here and then Dushuts National Forest. Um so this is just the information that was provided for O D F and W. Um so I'm I'm I can double check, but I would assume that maybe they just didn't have mapped habitat for sage grouse in these areas, but I'm happy to reach out to confirm.
I mean, based on the colors, the you know, the 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 color on the map, not the not the shading that we've added, but um I mean, it it kind of looks like that's the boundary of where you start to get into forests. That.
Yes.
Does that sound to me right?
Yeah, and I can turn on our zoning here. So you can see the E F U is kind of that lighter yellow color and then the the green is forest, so on the property.
Okay. So that probably explains why then the habitat only goes to there because you there's sage grouse aren't in the forest or they're out of the range.
Um are there any additional questions?
We sent out notification and answer a bunch of phone calls. Are we getting first appropriately for that, or how much resources is that? I mean, I'm just thinking. Fine, we mailed something out, but if it takes a bunch of time.
I think that's a good question, Commissioner. Uh I believe that they really only reimburse us for the actual cost of the mailing. Um but because we are, you know, initiating our own post acknowledgement plan amendment process, I, you know, I'd see, I'd say that there's a nice kind of crossover where we'd probably be answering questions from property owners anyway about our update process. Um so I wouldn't say that it's too time intensive, but I did wanna note that we did create just a basic website, bit periodically slash twenty twenty four sage grouse that directs people to D L C D, D D L C D staff, John Jennings, uh if they had questions on the L C C process, just to avoid kind of all those phone calls coming to us.
I was just thinking, you know, how much time are we investing, just so we understand?
Yeah, I'd I'd say so far, um I mean, I I was tracking this process for the last couple of years. Um but I I would say it's it's not the most time intensive item for staff. Just one of our ongoing responsibilities.
Uh, more other questions? That L C D C hearing, December, where where will that be?
Uh that would be held in Salem. Um so I will post, um we do have a copy of the Measure fifty six notice, which includes uh information on a hearing room, so I can post that to that uh website. Um but yeah, it's located in Salem and there's a virtual, virtual attendance option as well.
Um. Then my my other question is is just about um what these Measure fifty six notices say. I mean, I I was assuming that they would only go to the new people because in uh uh essentially reclassifying these lands can lead to restrictions on development, which is what's subject to a Measure fifty six claim, if I understand correctly, right? So if you were already in a mapped area, then why would you, why would we send those people's Measure fifty six notice?
Yeah, that's a great question. I just pulled up the Measure fifty six notice so I can kind of read from it. But exactly to your point, this really only notifies people um property owners that there's a new rule change that may limit, limit or prohibit land uses previously allowed on on your property. In consultation with legal counsel, we just felt that more notice is probably better than less notice. Um so just ma- making people aware of the process, even if their property is again being removed and will will not be further limited. Um so we had kind of a policy option there. I mean, we were pursuing the greater notice.
I mean, will the will the letters be different for those three categories, you know, staying in, staying in habitat, designated habitat, being added or being removed? I mean, this for the folks who are being removed, you should actually say, hey, you know, this means that you do not have these restrictions anymore versus, you know, for folks who are being added, it should say you 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 are facing new restrictions uh because your area has been added to this.
Yeah, I think I think that's a great question. Uh our G I S analyst is right now parsing out all the addressing information for that mailing. So I I mean, it's pretty extensive, just kind of noting um you know, already that the number of tax lots that are included in the boundary. So I'm not sure that we would be able to efficiently kind of parse out those three different uh like letters. Um but I guess, oh, I see that's, I was hoping Stephanie was still behind me. Um but I think that it is a policy choice if we were to send notice beyond the the new property owners that are included in the boundary. So if the board felt that that wasn't necessary, we could potentially only send to those that are newly being included. Will has something to add as well.
Or I mean, another way to to handle it would be, I I mean, if if you only want to send one letter to everybody, if you at least kind of had those explanations, you know, if you're being removed, then this, if you're being added, then this, and just make it clear for them whether which of those three categories can fall in. Rather than trying to have three different address lists, letters.
Make sure you're planning manager, manager Will Groves to the record. Um a great point. We'll really, we'll re-explore this with people. Um I had had similar concerns and there's a general principle in planning before notice is better. And a simpler notice, you know, less of kind of getting people in the right list. I'm not sure if all. And a simpler notice, you know, let that's less of kind of getting people in the right list. I'm not sure if all of these divisions are by tax law or some of them split properties. And so maybe we may be sending different letters to different properties depending on the area. And then at that point, in good faith, we need to send a map specific of a property and say this part of your property might be affected. What we could do is we could probably parse out the people who are either seeing no status change or reduction for the entirety of their tax lot and maybe throw them off the notice list so that we wouldn't have to field calls from them as they're confused by what's happening, which is in fact nothing to them.
I, I mean, it it might just make this map could probably be a little bit bisher and still be clear, but I mean, if if there's a way to, you know, keep all this information, just, you know, identify this is, this is what's being added, this is what's being removed, um, like eating that out or, you know, like hatching on it or something, then it would be easier for people to kind of just figure out. I I
Um, yeah, your point's very well taken. I mean, in the end, Nicole's gonna end up building these calls and to the extent that, you know, she's got to tell people that nothing's happening to them. We'd like to avoid those at the outset, right, right?
I mean, I would have liked to, uh, like I I'm reading the staff now, it would have been helpful for me to understand, okay, like what are the parts that are coming out, what's the stuff that's coming in?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so just like one more layer of information. If it doesn't make the map too busy, I think even a separate figure, that map's about as busy as it can be with it being possibly readable.
Yeah. So maybe an additional figure that shows adds and subtracts separately would be helpful.
Yeah, we can provide kind of the indexed maps that provide kind of that magnified look uh for a variety of the different areas in this combining zone. We're happy to do that.
Yeah, just the the more, I I agree with you, more notice is better, but the more clear it can be, the the better, what's what's happening with your property.
And it sounds like there isn't a desire at this time to provide any testimony to LCDC on the map changes. Uh, but if there is, please let me know, um, and I can return at a future meeting.
Okay.
Any insight into the three rural commercial centers? I mean, was that property owner engagement or somebody decided, oh? I mean, yeah, it's just interesting.
Yeah, ODF and W explained that um as part of their original process um last July. Um, they essentially just missed Milliken in the first round. Um, so that's why it was included kind of later on, uh, that removal um of that. But essentially, they just had that policy kind of statewide of if there was, you know, an unincorporated community essentially to carve it out since there's that status from DLCD and, you know, historic levels of development.
And then I just think of the core core habitat area, uh, when we did do a site tour out there a couple of years ago. There's, and we we see this, I mean, there's a disconnect between what people want to do in the land and what they're allowed to do on their land. It's hard to even get it to understand. You you're what? You know, I mean, I just wanted to put myself here and so this is still a collision course with some of the rural property.
So I do have a question, Nicole. So we've got this green around here and here, but then the brown line for the entire core habitat. So is that brown line assumed to to match that green line? Or I just, it wasn't finished and that's hot and I'm just going, okay, so I I could see that it goes all the way around, but then it's eliminated that one end.
Yeah.
Is there supposed to be a line there?
There, yeah, there's, I think it would be most, most uh clear, there is a, you know, the brown line where it meets the green line. Um, so that's an easy change we can make.
Okay, I mean, I just like, would maybe it's like side by side or something?
Right.
Like, yeah, okay.
I just make that boundary clear.
Yeah, okay. This from my perspective.
Our population stabilized or going up or going down? We have, is that like the front center information we have?
That's a good question. I believe I don't have the specific numbers, um, but I believe that they're stable. Um, I mean comparatively, you know, to Shuts County, the Lex that we have, there's been a lot of work in Kirk County. Um, so there hasn't really been a lot of work on like restoration projects in Dushut's County, so I believe they're pretty stable in Shuts County. In Kirk County, there's a slight increase, and then I'm not sure about the other uh eastern Oregon counties.
But you have to think, because we had, there were so many fires over there that it had to, it had to impact them. I mean, I was like, yeah. Yeah, look at just next, you know, Arnie County, all those fires. As you said, what, seven counties were included with us? So that's another six counties.
This this question is something we could ask Stu about. Well, I'm not sure what 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 used to be East Cascades Don't Want Society.
Can I ask?
Well, how about a thumbs up, thumbs down or flat? I mean, are they going up, down, or are they stable?
Um, it it's it's kind of tricky this year because they made a strong effort to go out and find new Lex. They found a bunch of new Lex. So in one sense, they added all those new birds to the list and you see a little thing going up. But the the Lex that they'd been monitoring for thirty years went down, so take your pick.
That's good. Thank you.
Do you want to introduce yourself then for the record for Brendan or our and our notes?
Uh, Stu Garrett, Dr. Stu Garrett, uh, representing uh the uh East Cascades Birding Alliance.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that brown line. Um, okay, we have item number twelve now.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Emily Horton, Program Manager for Environmental Health Preparedness and Engagement. Adria Albin, Environmental Health Supervisor. We are here today um to request approval to apply for another um funding opportunity for the Environmental Health Department and I Um, so this is a proposal with the CDC's EHS Net program. They're offering the opportunity to be awarded up to two hundred thousand dollars per year for a five-year grant cycle. Each year, we would have to apply for a new grant. So this is just an application for one year for two hundred thousand dollars. And the EHS Net program um has several parts. One is collaboration with other EHS Net participants. Another is to participate in a research project through um this grant funding and to involve some type of investigation of foodborne illness outbreaks. So um the project that we're proposing is to do a study of the causes of some of the bigger foodborne illness outbreaks that we're seeing in Dushut's County, which is part of a national trend um that address or um impact highly susceptible populations. Those are defined as older adults, younger children, or people with compromised immune systems that are more susceptible to foodborne illness. So um in effect, in addition to doing uh foodborne illness uh regular inspections, we would be collaborating and partnering with Oregon State University to do a study of the causes of some of these outbreaks that affect our highly susceptible populations. And then to develop some type of intervention program and support to try to reduce the foodborne illness disease burden. So the interventions could look like um additional training for the staff that work there and maybe um supplementing some of the um cost of the training to encourage participation, things like that, that would try to reduce the disease burden. And then if we were able to continue the funding for five years, in the last year, we would propose to do a final round of assessments and see if we've made any impact through these interventions that we're trying to implement. So that's the overview of the project. Do you guys have any questions?
So this, they, uh, it's two hundred thousand dollars revenue per year. And this is the application process for it. So I mean, there, you think this is real competitive, uh, rather?
Yeah, I do think it's competitive, sure. Yeah, so they have, um, they're going to award ten grants this year, so two hundred thousand dollars per organization. Yeah, nationally, yeah. Yeah, actually.
No problem. Let's go for it.
Oregon Health Authority about fifteen years ago was awarded one of these grants and their other local health departments that have been awarded. So it is competitive, but we thought we would give it a shot.
That's a good plan, though. A good idea.
He's there. So study the causes, develop the interventions, and then actually implement them and evaluate.
Yes.
So it's kind of a research project, but it's also kind of like a pilot project.
Yeah. Yeah, and what we were thinking about doing um is trying to so many of the facilities that serve these highly susceptible populations aren't regulated. So for example, we do inspections in schools and daycares. We don't regulate them. There's a memorandum of understanding where we kind of contractually do inspections. Um, similarly, in long-term care facilities, we respond to outbreaks right now, but we don't regulate or inspect them. So this would be to try to develop a model outside of regulation. How can the public health department most meaningfully impact some of these um outbreaks that we're seeing?
Or so then we have, what is organic carrots? That sound like what they were saying in the eighteen states.
They're good for you.
No, they, one person's already died. Yeah, a few people have been hospitalized.
Right.
So if you buy organic carrots, you better check them.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we are um mythbuster for the the our next newsletter when they say that, or you know, fruit and vegetables don't cause outbreaks, which a lot of people think that if they don't eat anything, they don't sick. But often, these high big ones are associated with.
Well, then it was the onions that were on them and the potatoes. It wasn't the meat, it was the onions.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that was.
There's a lot of these common mythbusters that be as EHS.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's part of what we'd be trying to do. We do is more education because sometimes what people think makes them sick isn't actually the riskiest thing that's happening. Yeah, so that education piece is really important.
Definitely.
Asked about um FTE patients of this, so um we'd be doing this work with existing staff. So like, um, we're not, we're not gonna be adding staff through this program, but does that, I I mean, is the studying designing of interventions, implementing interventions, is that uh is that essentially taking capacity away from doing inspections that then um the remainder of the inspectors need to absorb, like that kind of adding, adding everyone else's workload so that you can kind of do this project within existing staff.
Yeah, so this is a great question. Um, the position that we had in mind, so the FTE, the individual we had in mind to do this study is a position currently funded with modernization funding. So they were hired with the intent of doing more than the the inspection. Yes, doing work like this, exactly. Yeah, so we would be shifting around some inspection load, but not a significant amount. Yeah.
Any other discussion? Or when will you find out?
Okay, so the um, the award will be announced to us next summer and the grant funding cycle actually begins September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. So quite a bit of the time.
Well, I'm excited. Uh, you think like, okay, what could we do? And if we hit the call, it's already probably valuable, just thinking in that space about projects and priorities. I will prove to apply for this environmental health specialist network grant from the CDC second.
Uh, any further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
The chair of the chair. Thank you so much. Thanks, Peter. Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Wasn't this morning fun?
Oh, lovely.
All right. Oh, my gosh. Okay, I think it looks like the treasury report. Item number thirteen.
Hi, for the numbers.
Oh, my gosh, looks like the treasure report.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Bill King, uh, Shits County Treasurer. Thanks for allowing me to present the October Treasurers Report. Um, talk about the events over the last several weeks. Uh, certainly, it's been an impactful um several weeks with the news of uh Donald Trump winning the presidential election. Uh, shortly after the election, the stock market experienced what they call the Trump bump with expectations that his administration would likely focus on reducing regulations and implementing uh what many would consider to be more favorable tax policies. Ironically, the bond markets also realized a spike in yields with concerns related to monetary fiscal policy with tax cuts that could increase our federal borrowings and a potential trade war with China potentially adding anywhere from sixty to a hundred percent tariffs on imported goods. We're kind of a ying and a yang. I'm getting back to some of those actions. Um, with Republicans now in control of all three branches of government. Um, there is hope in in Washington that there will be a more streamlined approach to approval of a full-year federal budget, which again was um uh we're currently operating under a continuing resolution that funds uh federal agencies through December twentieth. And after that, we have a budget, so um, so with kind of a line duck. My mind is the fact that uh our legislators actually also need to address the debt ceiling limit which was suspended on June third of two thousand twenty-three and goes back into effect on January second, uh, two thousand twenty-five. And ironically, by statute, the treasury is only required to maintain a standard one-week cash balance before relying on outside borrowings and revenue inflows. So really critical that they address the debt ceiling issue uh fairly quickly. Uh, and this all is effectively pushing longer-term budget discussions until after the election. Uh, again, both parties seem to recognize the challenges associated with potential shutdown, partial shutdown. And so hopeful that both of those two very key issues could be addressed um somewhere between um here in September twentieth and in that first week in January. So again, a couple of things that we want to keep an eye on over the next month or forty-five days. So um, on a yearly basis, uh, some economic data, uh, October CPI rose slightly at two point six percent up from two point four percent in the previous month, which was slightly higher than forecasted. And uh, again, uh, the primary concern is over persistent pressure on housing costs, which we've talked about before. Uh, as expected, uh, the Fed chose to reduce short-term rates by another twenty-five basis points during its meeting on November seventh. And for the final meeting of the year, which is scheduled uh over December seventeenth and eighteen, the market now projects roughly a fifty-fifty probability of a further twenty-five basis point rate cut. Um, there's concerns that are we really moving inflation in the right direction? And I think the uh the Fed uh really wants to go slow and be for be sure before they make any further rate cuts because it's going to be really difficult to go the other way. And as I've mentioned before, it's really the only tool in their toolbox with regards to abating inflation is to uh is to cut rates, so it'll be interesting to see what happens and certainly the meeting minutes that come out of that meeting in December is going to be really telling, I think, for what's going to happen early in in two thousand twenty-five. Um, from a manufacturing perspective, the producer price index declined slightly to two point four percent year over year, which actually met analysts' expectations. And uh, flip side of that is the most recent average thirty-year mortgage rate jumped to seven point five six two percent of nearly one percent from mid-October, which is mirrored the increase in the ten-year bond rate. So again, that big jump in, big jump in rates that we had uh right after the election have been, uh, actually, it actually occurred several weeks before the election, but continued through the election. This had a extremely negative impact on bond on mortgage rates. So that again is expected to create a little bit of a headwind with regards to mortgage mortgage activity and certainly real estate, real estate activity in general, which is a huge driver of GDP. So um more to come there.
I mean, that's not surprising, right? I mean, the mortgage rates track the bond market. They don't track the
All they do, the ten-year.
They don't track the Fed rate.
Yeah, they do not. That's a measurement of short-term rates and and really uh long-term mortgage rates are primarily tied to what happens on the ten-year bond. Right, so. Uh, so reinforcing uh kind of a continuing challenging housing market, uh, mortgage. So reinforcing kind of a continuing challenging housing market, mortgage applications declined seventeen percent month over month. And again, housing has continued to be a drag on GDP growth. But hopeful that we're going to start to see some some firm reporting here and. And then one through this in the future. Housing starts in October came in at one point three million, falling five percent below the projected forecast. And building permits also continue to lag. At one point four two eight million annualized down to one point four six oh, which was forecasting. At a regional level, providing data on several markets here within Shits County. Been single-family residential market experienced a jump in median sales price to eight hundred thousand dollars in October. Which is actually, it's up from seven hundred and fourteen thousand in September. And the overall median sales price event now exceeds the yearly high, which previously had been seven hundred and seventy-five thousand in Jan. It's telling when you kind of dive into those numbers a little bit more in detail, the number of sales virtually matched last month's total. But the number of higher-end million-dollar-plus homes is now roughly a third of total sales in the bed market. And thirty-eight of those were cash sales. So again, higher median sales price. And again, a lot of those are cash sales, so they're not being influenced by what's happening to mortgage rates. Uh, there's now a three-month supply of homes currently listed for sale. And the days on market is extending out on sold properties for now out the forty-eight days. And that's up from, I think, about thirty days last month. And building permits in the bed market were flat. Actually, I take that back. They did go up a little bit from September. They were fifty-three in October and they were thirty-nine in September. Uh, Redmond Statistics for the year show similar trend. Current median sales price is actually over five hundred thousand now in Redmond. Uh, up slightly from four hundred ninety-three thousand in September. And Redmond area permits actually jumped quite a bit in October, up to thirty-nine for the month. Uh, and they were down to a low of fifteen in September, so slight improvement there. Uh, looking at some of the other markets within Shits County, Sisters Market, seven hundred two thousand median sales price. Sun River, seven hundred ninety thousand, Lapine was four hundred and ten thousand. Sisters and Sun River, there's very light volume. So a couple of large sales can really swing those markets one way or the other from a month month-to-month basis, but. Again, it's kind of when you look at a number of sales in Bend and also in Redmond. Uh, pretty telling right now as to what's happening in those two markets in particular.
How many months supply in in Redmond do you have that down?
Oh, I don't think I've put that. It's it's kind of hovering around the the three-month, the supply that we have in Bend. It's it's around three months. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't write that.
I think Lapine had gone to like six months or something last.
Yeah.
Month ago.
Yeah. So anyway, that's any questions on economic conditions? Hearing that, I'll talk about the October Treasurers Report. Our portfolio balance for the month jumped to three hundred and twenty-four million a month end, which was an increase of forty-four million from September. And this jump is obviously primarily due to robust tax collections. And the timing of tax turnover. So that was as of October thirty-first. And then we processed a large tax turnover on Friday, November one. So again, those numbers are a little bit skewed just because of the timing of tax receipts versus tax turnover. Uh, net investment earnings for the month were eight hundred and forty thousand, which was twenty-eight thousand higher than last month's earnings. And again, primarily driven by larger portfolio balance for the month. And so three hundred and twelve thousand dollars higher than a year ago. And again, overall, that's just reflective of the higher rate environment that we're currently in. And our managing funds and year-over-year growth in the portfolio. Uh, all portfolio category balances are well within policy guidelines. Uh, the LGIP rate, which was expected, actually dropped from five point three percent in the prior month of five percent at the end of October. Uh, it'll be interesting to see what's going on in in the short-term bond market. And whether or not that continues to decline or kind of stabilizes. But I did expect up until a couple of weeks ago that we'd see further decline in the LGIP rate. Now I'm not so sure. And if I had a perfect crystal ball, I probably wouldn't be doing what I do today, so. The portfolio has awaited term to maturity of point seven years. Again, that time to maturity is somewhat skewed by dedicated courthouse funding. Uh, that was invested to match the expected funding need. And then the distribution schedule that I now show in the report actually breaks out that portion of. Of the redemptions that are targeted toward courthouse funding. And. Just another, you know, kind of side note is I'm going to be investing roughly forty million this week. That came in through a big influx in tax receipts last last week and should have that redeployed by the end of the week. And positive note is that bond rates have gone back up again, so Shits County will benefit by that as well. So what I'm doing right now is kind of filling out the back end of the three-year maturity ladder. And so really targeting kind of mid. Uh, twenty-seventh to the end of the year, in terms of kind of filling out, really targeting redemptions in that six to eight million dollars per month. And so we actively trading here for the end of this week. Any questions on any of that?
So I'd love to get a sense of how our money is is growing in relation to. The rate of increasing inflation, or basically, you know. If you look at these numbers and say. Uh, you know, three hundred twelve thousand greater. And greater investment income than a year ago. But me with the inflation that we've had, it means. I mean, does that, does that kind of like just make us break even, or are we not even keeping up with inflation or?
Well, and again, I, you know, we've talked internally around kind of the inflation that we've experienced internally. Uh, you know, with within Shits County, and I would say we're we're centrally breakeven or maybe struggling to beat that expectation right now. So we benefited by higher bond yields. But again, cornflation has been kind of in that mid at two percent range, so effective yield, we're. Feeding that that inflation number, but not by much. So.
Thank you. That was exactly what I was.
Yeah, no, I think you're spot on. Yet again, we are not active traders in the portfolio. We are seeing a large number of those low-yielding investments running off now. Which occurred several years ago, and so, you know, you can see with the most recent portfolio yield, we've seen a. A big jump, actually month-to-month over the last several months. As we've been able to reap the benefit of higher-yielding new investments and seeing some of those older investments run off. So moving in the right direction, but again, our our focus is on. Safety and security, so we're we're confined. We have pretty narrow guardrails and what we can invest in and and again, we're targeting kind of that three-year investment window as well. We don't want to invest too far out. Just want to make sure that we've got redemptions available to support ongoing operations.
It was fascinating, though, because we had two changes in October, the second and the twenty-third. Um, and normally.
It happened, yeah.
Normally, it doesn't happen normally in like twice a month. I see it in twenty-three that I did in January, but.
Yeah.
Usually, yeah, it just.
Yes.
It's kind of a little bit inconsistent.
And like I said, I I did. Expect to see another reduction. Our bank, actually, First Interstate Bank, on that kind of third tier that we have. They lowered the rate on that tier to four point seven five, and I think it was around thirty to forty-five days ago. I don't have the exact date in front of me, but. Again, their cost of funds, they're looking at managing their balance sheet, trying to, you know, manage, you know, what they're paying out for deposits, but. Again, I I wouldn't be surprised to see another reduction in the OTIP rate, but I also, because that's more of a shorter-term rate. I could also not be surprised to see that stabilize a little bit as well.
Well, October thirteenth to twenty-one, the rate was twenty-four five. That wasn't very long ago, folks.
Yeah, that hopefully makes you feel a little bit better, but we wouldn't have the inflation week.
No, that's what I mean. That's the other side of the story.
Right, though, anyway.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Robert? Thank you so much.
I have an updated handout for you, which I actually think is the first time I had to provide updated numbers on the financial report from the original one included in the packet. What I handed out, sorry. Robert Tinsel, Chief Financial Officer for the Department. Good afternoon, commissioners. What I handed out is just an updated, the summary for all the funds combined together. Uh, really what it was for, and then Fund Two Seventy-four, that's really where it is on the admin fund, and we'll get to that and I'll point it out when we get there. Uh, but there was a. Consolidation report, you just miss a minus number in there, and so it threw off the admin transfer that they were showing, and so. As I was reviewing this later Friday, I finally saw it, but. Over the weekend, kudos to Cheryl for making the adjustment and then Casey at Temp Help, we have. Updated the report, so you have the updated numbers right twenty today, so. Uh, everyone's right on the ball, so I just want to thank them for the.
Yeah, somebody sent an email out like in the, like in the middle of Saturday or something, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
On the Friday.
Yeah, so.
It was our, the B O C C.
Yeah, Casey Hurd, so we are, there are seven people on our accounting team and we have three vacant positions right now, so. Uh, we are scrambling a little bit, but we were able to hire a former former employee as a temp to work part-time. For a little bit, and so she was able to step right in, thankfully, and help us in some of the areas, and yeah, the B O C C report was one of them, so.
I know, I was like, wow, somebody's working like Saturday night at five o'clock or something, yeah.
Yeah, so so we're like, whenever you can fit in work, we'll use you, so she did. Okay, so in front of you, you have the. October twenty twenty-four. Financial report, again, these are unaudited numbers just for the period ending October thirty-first. Uh, the highlights on the first page, general fund. Revenue is eight point six million or seventeen point nine percent of budget. And last year it was seven point four or sixteen point six percent of budget, but this. Comparison includes the transfers, which transfers every year, transfers in and transfers out. They can vary by year based on activity. This is transfers to to or from other funds. So if you just look at operating revenue, it was seven point four million last year if you take out the transfer, so. Revenue is the same as it was last year. Expenditures, eleven point nine million at this point, and it was fourteen point five million. However, if you again there, if you take out the transfers for the expenditures. Expenditures last year at this time was eleven point five million, so really it's essentially a four hundred thousand dollar increase in operating expenses compared to last year. And with the revenue, a lot of it, especially with the general fund, it's the taxes, so it's just depending on the timing of when the tax revenue comes in. And you see your dashboard there. Uh, the next page is the Position Control Summary. So when I highlight, the total here is ten point six eight percent for the first quarter. And again, the last two years have been ten point five five and ten point four three for the total year, so again, we're. It seems like we've calmed a little bit in what we have. As far as the vacancy rate overall for the county.
I think you just say the last two years, it was like, it's ten point five five and ten point four three.
Yep. Fiscal year twenty-four was ten point five five and fiscal year twenty-three, ten point four three, right, for the total year. So hovering around that ten percent number.
So it hasn't really changed that much.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I meant. It's been stable as far as not.
When you said tame, do you meant volatility?
Yes, thank you, yeah, yeah, because it was as high as twelve percent or fourteen some months, but. Uh, now it's seems to be around that. I mean, there are still fluctuations, for example, the assessor's office right now at the very top of the line. Eighteen point eight-two percent of the percent unfilled, they ended fiscal year twenty-four at eleven point seven eight, so right now they're experiencing a little higher than last year. The DA's office ended last year at three point six seven, they're at four percent, so real close. And the total general fund ended last year at five point nine six, and the general fund right now is eight point seven, so a little higher. But overall for the county, and and again, you can look at all all the different departments, but we're just hovering around where we've been. Okay, I'm going to pass by all the departmental pages, and again, you do have a new handout in front of you. The biggest change is mostly in the Fund Two Seventy-four, so you can refer to that in here. Uh, packet. So I think the page number two seventy-eight in your printed copy is the general fund. General Fund oh oh one. As the county treasurer mentioned, he's going to be investing quite a bit this week. We are tax department, tax office staff have been. Very busy last week. They're still very busy this week. We still have a lot of mail that we're processing as well, but they're doing a great tremendous job. Uh, we've processed probably about seventy-three percent of what we would anticipate. Uh, so far is what we've processed, but again, we're still counting typically. In November, and again, this report's only until October, but typically in November, we we receive about ninety-two to ninety-three, ninety-two to ninety-four percent of tax receipts we receive by November, so. We're, we processed already seventy-three percent of that, and we're still processing. We still got a ways to go, and those numbers we'll see in November. So on the general fund, property taxes through October was three point five million dollars. Last year at October thirty-first, it was four million. However, in fiscal year twenty-three, it was only two point six million, so it also, I think, depends on the time, how the days fall and. Uh, we're always busier after a weekend, we'll get more mail in after a weekend and and people come in to pay their taxes, so. So it. We're, we're, we appear to be on target at this point, so I'm not concerned with the differences in the numbers. Uh, right now, one thing you will see on that same top-line property taxes, the footnote for A, you see that negative two hundred and twelve thousand. This is what I mentioned last month, how the actual assessed value came in lower than we had budgeted. And so that's where you'll see the adjustment of two hundred and twelve thousand dollars that we're expecting to come in less if, you know, everyone pays. Uh, instead of based on the thirty-nine point six million, we're anticipating about thirty-nine point four, so difference of about two hundred thousand dollars there. And just, so you know, I think we've said this number before, but we mailed out over a hundred and fourteen thousand tax statements, so there's quite a few transactions that have come through that. That as well. Uh, page two seventy-nine, next juvenile fund, oh three oh. The biggest change here is they are the total variance on the very bottom number on the bottom lower right is one million dollars. That's their total fund balance greater than they expected, but the majority of that is in their personnel savings. At this point, you'll see with the vacancy rate, so seven hundred and fifty-three thousand is where their projection is saving at this point. And again, we're we're one quarter in plus a month, so we'll see how we end up the rest of the fiscal year. Next page, Fund One Sixty-One Seventy, the TRT funds. So we're. Good news, bad news, I guess, uh, bad, I'll I'll get bad news first, then I'll get some good news, I'll say after a little bit, but. Uh, so year to date, we are down from last year by one point one percent, so our actuals compared to last year is down one point one percent. Okay, now the good news, since we budget a little more conservatively this year, we're up one point one percent compared to last year. One percent isn't much, really, it's like break even either way, but we our actuals are down a little bit, but because we lowered our budget, we're doing a little better compared to budget than what we anticipated. But it's still only one percent, we'll see. Hopefully this early snow helps. Uh, hopefully it's a good weekend, you know. Yes, last weekend, this past weekend.
As long as you have a good past for the year.
Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yeah, at Thanksgiving, we get more, so as we know.
Now, that was the number one on visitor's side, according to the news this morning, as I was driving in, people were coming to bed, so everyone knows that, yes.
Yeah, I interesting fact, I know you all get their reports as well, but at least so far through the October numbers. The private occupancy has been up a little bit, but the business side had been down. And then in total, it's, you know, about one percent. Down overall, so maybe, you know, the Airbnbs and such homes. Fill up first and then commercial, I don't know, I just noticed that trend so far, the the private is up while the commercial is down. Thus far.
And I was told that some people have reduced their rates of that.
Yeah, that could make sense.
So.
Fund two fifty-five, so page two eighty-three, I believe, or packet, we're there, looking at the Sheriff's Office numbers. On the middle section for requirements, you will see that they do have a variance in the last column for projections. You might recall last year, they only had put the. You might recall last year, they only had put the variance in a couple different forms instead of breaking out where they're truly anticipating the savings to come from for their vacancy savings. So they did update that this month for us. Total requirements, they are projecting a savings of that $3.2 million. And then if you scroll down near the bottom under fund balance, that beginning fund balance line, you can see that they will, they're actually starting the year of 3.2 million better than they thought as well. So in total, right now, the projection is the total fund balance, the very bottom number, is they'll end up 6.1 million better than they originally anticipated in their budget, all things being equal when they, when they come in. So they are seeing, experiencing some vacancy savings there.
So what should that number be for their, their fund number?
Beginning balance, 15.5 million.
Right, okay, so it's 15.5. What is it, do they really need in order to cover those months when, you know, when we start July? And we don't get the funding from the property taxes until October, November?
Yeah.
So is 19 million going to, is that, that's putting them in a way better spot, isn't it?
It is better. Yeah, it is much better spot because out of 20 million or 66 million is their total budget requirements. Plus there's some transfer, but we, we saw a quarter of that really is essentially.
Quarter of the 66?
Yeah. Yeah, because they require four months in there. Well, that would actually be 33%, sorry, for, four months, 33.3% as opposed to 25%.
Okay.
Which is, you know, close to where they're at. Yeah.
That's great. Like you see that they're, the ranches aren't going to cost as much, so.
So health services, Fund 274, and this is page 284. This is where you can, if you want to refer to the handout that I've given you, or I can point out the difference that we have. This first page here, it's the roll-up summary of their three areas, the admin, behavioral health, public health. The administrative, in the middle section, under requirements, their admin administration allocation, the bottom line of the total requirements. Again, kind of in the center, the incorrect number is, the projection is, is a positive 3.7 million. They, the incorrect report had a 12.7 million negative. And again, it gets to the transfer, which I'll show you on the next page. And the final number on the bottom, total fund balance, it's a positive projection of 8.7 million or 1.5 greater than what they anticipated. Previously, it was $15 million negative projection, all because of an admin. One number can skew things. So that's why it stood up, stood up. That's right. You know, and, and I apologize for that, that error wasn't caught sooner. But yeah, update on their Fund 270, so currently they have 26.5 billion of actual in the reserve. That's the O H P reserve that they have reserved for capital projects and other items. They're projecting by the end of the year at $30.2 million at this point. So the second, the next page, 285, or the second page they hand out, the middle section there again, under administration. This is where you see in the admin fund, under total requirements, the budget is a negative $15 million. And that's because it's a transfer out essentially. Or actually, sorry, it's a transfer in to help pay for their costs. The projection should be that same budgeted number, but in their first report, it was a net of a 1.3. It had put 1.3 million. So it's really bad. Came in from the other departments to pay for their admin fees. So that's revenue essentially coming in under their expenditure line. Next page, 286, Behavioral Health. This, this did not change. So what's in your packet, you should, this, this will be the same. Just a couple items I want to point out. In the middle section there, under total requirements, you'll see capital outlay. They had budgeted $1.9 million, they're only projecting to spend $88,000 now. And as I mentioned in footnote E, it was because originally they had budgeted for those expansion in the Le Pine for a new site. But they're not anticipating those expenditures during fiscal year 25, so they adjusted that number. So that is positive for the fund of $1.8 million. And then the next line down, transfers in O H P, they're projecting less transfers in that they'll need into this fund because they're spending less. And so those numbers changed. So, but at the end, about $600,000 difference from what they originally budgeted as well. So and end up in that fund. Public Health, 274, since, and there was no change from the previous draft, and it was similar to last, last month as well. Next page, 288, Beauty Development, 295. The top part is resources for Fund 295, and there's that footnote E on all the revenues. And that's as a result of them coming to the board and asking for fee increases, but the board approved this. This is the first month now that it reflects the increased revenue. And so the revenue projection increased about $100,000 from what it was before as a result of the new fee increases. And their total requirements, they're anticipating about $100,000 under from what the budget is there. Overspent. Their projection, they still target a million dollars is what they are, and this reflects that. As they stated in the reports, the permit and application volumes align with the 2015 to 2017 numbers that they experienced then. But they did say consistent activity in single-family dwelling permits and applications and site evaluations that they experienced, but otherwise it's, the rest is, volumes are within that 15, 2015 to 2017 type period. Road Fund 2, 325, page 289, there was little change from last month. Their million-dollar over projection over their 3.4 that they anticipated. Here it's on target what they anticipated last month. Same with the doll pearl probation, so I'll skip through a few pages. If it's similar to what it was last month, then nothing new to highlight there. Same as solid waste. Fair and Edge Expo, page 294. Fund 615. Their requirements, although they're, it's not that much different, but their projections on their total requirements decreased now to year-end 4.2. So they're having a higher vacancy savings built in there now from what they're anticipating. Last month, they reported they thought their expenses would be 4.6, so now it's only 4.2. So that's a savings of about $400,000. So their year-end total fund balance now projection is at 288,000 or 163,000 more than they budgeted. Last month, they were only anticipating a $45,000 increase. So their projections now are a little more favorable than they were last month based on current activity. The other funds were the same or very little change from last month as well. And then we, our second to last fund, I'll move all the way to Health Benefits Fund, 675, page 301 in your packet. So this is the same thing. The revenue now includes the adjustments for, as a result of evac, the recommendations from evac. And then the board approved the changes with some of the plan design changes, which also included the prescription rebate changes. And then also some of the changes on the expenditures. So total resources, the projection for revenues are now 4.6 million, which is about 200,000 more than it was last year. Sorry, last month, last month when we reported. And that's as a result of anticipating additional prescription rebates. And also we are, as we look at the interest, it's earning a little more interest, those numbers have been updated as well. On the requirement side, there, there, we are still anticipating that the health benefits are, that we'll be spending more on the claims than what we originally had budgeted. However, the Deschutes Onsite Pharmacy, you will see that we'll be spending less than we budgeted there. So it's about $5 million over what we had originally budgeted there. But the projection of 38.8 million is 1 million less than we had last year as, sorry, last month. Saying that last month, as a result of the changes through the feedback. So in total now, down at the very bottom, total fund balance, we are projecting the fund balance standard at 7.7 million as we get closer to that $8 million target. Year to date so far, our actuals, we've increased 500,000 over last month. So the trend at this point is, is looking good. Last month, we thought our projection was, it was only 6.4 million. So now we bumped it up to 7.7 million, 1.3 million increase. So which is good news for the fund. We hope the trends continue moving in those positive ways. And based on our actions that the board took, that helps the fund and the plan sign and the savings. So we're moving forward there. And the final fund, 911-705-710, same as last month, little change overall, basically their biggest savings is in their personnel cost of 700,000. So that's how they'll end up a little better than they budgeted by $1.8 million. Any other questions on the overall financial reports? Okay. Thank you very much for being so thorough on that. Having the whole big picture in your head, knowing to look for those little items on some of them. Yeah, should have probably a little sooner, but I didn't. That's value, though, recently. Multiple eyes on it. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right. So other items?
We have one draft letter for the board's consideration. One to Chris, is the one Chris sent the final for?
Yeah.
Okay.
With the track.
Okay. Yeah, great.
So you want to, need an op, or you want me to? Okay. Okay. For record, Jen Patterson, Strategic Conditions Manager. So last week, on the evening of Tuesday, November 12th, the US Senate unanimously passed the Secure Rural Schools Reauthorization Act of 2023. Now there's a deadline looming, according to NACO, on the 20th of this month for the US House to pass that reauthorization act in order to get that funding. Chris Odie's been the lead on this, but I think he's out this afternoon and was unable to attend. But his information is that Representative Benz is supportive of this. But at this time, Representative Chavez de Rima's support is unknown. But there is a recommendation to, if the board is in support, write a letter to both our US representatives encouraging them to take this up and pass this within the deadline before the.
We actually have more than 200,000. We have 208,000 residents.
I'll change that. That was a Google search for me. I ought to say it, over 200,000. Okay.
Over, yes.
That's going to. Thank you.
Well, supportive of this letter. I know SRS isn't as impactful for Deschutes County as it is for some of our other rural counties. State, but it is part of SRS. $600,000, nothing sneezes. I'm supportive as well.
Great. So if I make that one minor change, we'll get that added for signature this afternoon and hopefully get those out soon.
And we definitely should ask Charlotte to return.
Yep. And Chris said if there's any individual outreach that the commissioners would like to do to that office, that, that would be also encouraged as well.
So I just forwarded the resubmital by the Building Department for the 20 million for South County to Congressman Benz's chief of staff. And yeah, because last time, I don't think, they said, you know, hopefully it'll help having someone's name on it. Right?
For the minutes, I'll make a motion to sign the letter for supporting Secure Rural Schools Reauthorization.
That went ahead in a slow cutting out almost 200,000 second.
Any further discussion, Chris DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chad?
Yes.
And the Chair will check. Thank you so much.
John. Robin, just kicking that will stop her out.
I've got another item. Like that were jury duty right during the holidays, though, so it might work out well for our meetings. But starting the 23rd of December.
Oh, you'll be so lucky. That's the one time of year you want to have it because they'll never, it won't.
Well, yeah, so maybe they work out well or.
Yes.
We'll see.
That's, that's usually what.
Two-week period, starting the 23rd.
That's all. Okay, so I have a question. This is about the Leona Park that's owned by Le Pine Parks. Apparently the bridge or the gate was approved for our road department over on this spot. But they've had the road or the bridge, the gate over here, and they need to move it. And your neighbors came and asked if we could do that. And here's the original approval. So that come from our road department then? It's on Leona Park. And what happens is they took a gate out, and then what happens is all kinds of people are driving. The park is actually closed for the winter, but people are driving up and they're leaving their litter and all kinds of things. And the people that were here with the baby originally live right there. It's their house right here, and it's, it's a bit of a nightmare. So they're trying to get the gate back to where it was with the road.
I talked to one of the board members of the Park District recently. He asked me, what's going on with this gate? And I said, well, I kind of know about that because this has gone on for a while now. Resident in the area put that gateway up at the intersection, and it's not authorized. So it's up to the park board just to take action on the official location of the gate. And that was years ago that it was done. And then the current, the last board just stopped fighting at some point.
It was approved in 18.
But yeah, and the resident that lives there is just ballistic about having to live there in a beautiful place with a public park behind them. And it, it's just a full-on conflict situation. But that's the park board to pick up. And I mean, I'll support it. I'll try to make it the best we can, and I always have. But as I said, if the park district wasn't engaged in that for the last few years, but now the current board is going to get engaged with that.
Okay, so. Okay. Oh, let's see. Oh, and then we have another situation from this weekend, and I'm still waiting to hear back from Peter regarding a project in Sisters, and hopefully, have you heard anything about basics? Anything's happening?
Yes, we just wrote to Peter a couple of hours ago.
Okay, all right. So they know, yeah, Basics wants to do a 27-employee project in Sisters in a building that's been empty for a couple of years. And so trying to accomplish that as fast as we can. And I know we've, we're coddling it, dotting all the i's and everything. So hopefully something good's going to happen there. Oh, and then we did have Behavioral Health, right? You know, it's really good. Holly was here today because originally she was talking about only doing like five beds for youth. And because this can serve all of Eastern Oregon, after hearing what the kids' center does for the community. It's really great that they're now realizing that 15 beds makes much greater sense. And part of the facility would be for like day use too, not just, not just youth that need a really helpful place to be able to stay and not have to go to Portland. So it would be so much better for parents in the long run. Anyway, it sounds like we, we are making progress there. So very happy to hear that. Anything else, Commissioner?
I'll just share on Thursday, I went to the open house at the Best Care Addiction Medicine Treatment Center Clinic. They opened on 3rd, and really exciting to hear about the impact that medication-assisted treatment is, is having on substance use disorders in our community. A lot of, lot of success, helped a lot of people move to, get to a better place than, you know, if not be complete, complete with recovery, at least be several steps along the way with their recovery. On Friday, the Bend MPO Policy Board met, and one item of interest for the, for the board commissioners is that we, we've talked about the boundary, the MPO boundary in the Tullow area. On my requests.